Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Dean. Here. Mr. Ferguson.
Here.
Mr. Robinson.
Here.
Mr. Spring.
Here.
Mr. Strike.
Here.
Ms. Barker. Mr. Walker.
Here.
Mr. Sporhays.
Here.
Mr. Cange.
Here.
Thank you.
You had Ms. Barker excused? Okay. Mr. Spring, you had a question on the minutes, but it's my understanding we've got to take up the consent agenda first and take up an item on the consent agenda, then we will come back to that. If I may, please. Mr. Walker, will you please handle the consent agenda? Wait a minute, I'm back, excuse me. Excuse me. Mr. Sporhays, would you please handle disclosures first?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Spring, do you have any disclosures?
I have none.
Ms. Dean?
No.
Mr. Ferguson?
No.
Mr. Walker?
None.
Mr. Strike?
None.
Mr. Cange?
No, sir.
And Mr. Robinson, do you have any disclosures?
No.
Thank you.
And you have no disclosures?
And I have none as well, thanks.
Okay, fine, thank you. Okay, we'll do that, but I want to get rid of this in South Anchorage first, okay? Eight people in the audience and we get it screwed up, I apologize. Mr. Walker, would you please handle the consent agenda? I would, so yeah, I would go ahead and make a motion. Make a motion and then pull it.
In the matter of, or case 2015-001...
No, make a motion to appro-
Oh, I'm sorry. What?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Oh, I moved to approve the consent agenda.
We need a second. We have a motion and a second. Any objection? Okay. Now, if you want to pull an item, we can pull an item.
Yes, Mr. Chair, like to pull item 1A. A1.
Case 2014-001. South Anchorage High School, thank you very much. Anything else to be pulled on the consent agenda? Anybody object to the consent agenda? Seeing and hearing none, the rest of the consent agenda is approved on that. Now, we have pulled Resolution 2015-001, South Anchorage. Mr. Cange, that was yours, you pulled. Would you like to take it from there?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Maybe just a point of procedure, since we're being asked to finalize this resolution without having the formal minutes and knowing that this is going to be appealed, I just wanted to get a little more clarification maybe on procedure on that. I don't feel comfortable signing off on this without having the formal minutes been adopted yet. If that makes sense.
Mr. Spring, and then staff.
Yeah, I think I'm comfortable going ahead with it. I think staff tried to address the issue about whether or not the commission can make changes to the conditions through the approval of the resolution, and it seems clear that we can do that. And I'd like to speak to condition number five, which is the object of the potential appeal and the issue that was raised by the staff in our memo. That reads, "The evening events using the light and sound systems are limited to 10 events per year", specifically. And there was some discussion, and I think it was, I was accurately quoted in the discussion, implying that I, my opinion was that the events would be limited, all events would be limited with the use of sound and lights to 10 events per year. And I don't, I guess I didn't, I think I did say that, and I'm pretty sure without the minutes I can testify to that. So, the issue is, what the other people thought regarding this condition. Did, obviously, lights would only be used in the evening. And I guess I assumed since lights was an issue and it was limited to 10, that PA would also be limited to 10. And I think it's an important issue for the neighborhood specifically because they're concerned about the noise of the PA system. And we didn't have any real set guidance from staff or the Health Department regarding how much noise would be generated by the PA and would it be higher than the standard that's now set by municipal ordinance. And I think it, in my opinion, since if we're allowed to make changes to the condition as a part of the resolution, I would change this condition to "All events using the lights and sound". Excuse me? Lights or sound, yes, I think would be good. Lights and sound, or sound? And/or sound.
Okay.
Yeah, and that would, in my mind, that's what I voted on, so...
So what you're leading up to is changing five to "All events using the lights and/or sound system are limited to 10 events per year"?
That's correct.
Okay. Mr. Cange, you had the floor and were, you made a suggestion. Do you want to make that in the form of a motion?
No, I think I've got a bit better clarification. I just wanted to pull this to make sure. As I didn't put that condition in there, I'm glad Mr. Spring was able to clarify that for me, so I don't really have any issue voting on this, given that clarification now.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Sporhays?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just so I'm completely clear, if there's an event in the morning where they use the sounds for some reason, where the lights aren't necessary, then they would not be able to use the sound that evening? And that would count as two events? Is that how I understand that? It's just evening events? That's what we're clarifying? Are you following me?
I'll try to clarify that, if I may.
Please, go ahead.
Well, there'd be a limit of 10 events total for sound with using the PA and lights. So I'm, although the evening lights and sound are going to be used the same, at the same time, is what I'm thinking, so... So it'd be, maybe lights wouldn't be used for 10 times, but sound I expect would be because the events, like football games, the majority of them take place during the day, and they're going to be using the PA for those major football events. They may not use lights. So I think the 10 events, limiting the 10 events, the PA would be, is what we want. That's what I think the neighborhood expected us to vote on. And I, but I think that's what they thought we approved.
Thank you, Mr. Spring. Mr. Sporhays and Mr. Walker?
No, thank you, Mr. Spring, for your clarification. And to be frank, I haven't been to, you know, a high school soccer game in a while, but I just want to make sure that if they use the PA system in the morning for a soccer game, they could still use it that evening for a football game and it wouldn't be two events in one day. You see what I'm, is that what you're saying, Mr. Spring? Or is this just for night games?
It's, events, if there's two events in a day and using the PA, that would be, take care of two of the 10. It'd be each event separate. So, if you use a PA during the day and have another event in the evening using a PA, that would be two events, and there's only eight left, then.
See, I'm kind of in disagreement there.
That's what we're trying to work our way through here on that. Mr. Walker, and then Mr. Strike?
Again, without having the minutes, it's kind of hard to roll back the clock here, but, I mean, my recollection was that the coach sat there and agreed with us that there was going to be 10 events, whether they're football, soccer, no matter what, 10 events and no more using the lights and PA system. So I think what, my interpretation of what the school or the coaching staff agreed to was a more, I'd say, a more restrictive version than what Brandon is suggesting, but, for what that's worth.
Mr. Strike?
I hear the argument, but I would counter that the discussions we had with the community and was centered around noise and centered around the time and centered around the lights. And therefore, there's not a restriction as to how long an event can last other than it must be done by 10:00 PM. So whether an event starts at 9:00 in the morning and goes until 10:00 PM, under that guise, it could be considered one event usage. So from that perspective, as you lead up, I would counter that, and I understand where Mr. Spring is coming from, but I think that the intent here to keep this pliable and doable is that we're looking at a day. You start using the PA during the day, that's your, that's one. And that ends at 10:00 PM, period. That event ends. Now, if there's a sound problem, it becomes a code issue in the permitting and whether or not they're properly permitted for those respective events. And I think the, we have to rely then on the permitting process as to whether or not they're properly permitted then, if they're going above the decibel rating. But for that, my interpretation would be in, they're allowed in that day. Pardon? And use is in a day. They can have a break, an intermission, start up again. Done by 10.
I agree with the done by 10, that's covered under four.
Yep.
Okay. Mr. Sporhays and Mr. Walker?
Well, just real quick, I'm in complete agreement with Mr. Strike. An event or a school uses is one day, so...
Mr. Walker?
Well, before we vote on this, I just wanted to kind of ask you, Greg, what, I mean, as someone who once lived in that neighborhood, if you backed up to this thing and they were using the sound all day long, 10, 10 times every, you know, because it's not in the summer, right? It's a pretty confined space, it's usually going to be in the fall, maybe in the spring. 10 solid days of squawking PA system, I mean, would that, I guess I'm just trying to temper it a little bit with some...
I can appreciate that, and it, but we never said a starting point, a starting time for a football game. We never stated a starting point of when that occurs. Now, if they were to use a sound system all day and never turn the lights on, that's one. They better be careful because they can't use 10 other situations where they'd use the lights and the sound system. They'd be in violation of this conditional use. Now, you notice that in number five, it says "evening events". It doesn't, now, if we say "all events using the lights and/or sound", we're counting activities in the morning, mid-afternoon, and evening.
Mr. Spring, oops, pardon me. Mr. Spring?
Yeah, I think clearly we heard in the presentations that football was the main issue. And we know football games start in the afternoon frequently, and there's a few that start in the evening. So, if we just leave evening in, I think we're not really addressing, we didn't address the concerns of the neighborhood and really doesn't really reflect what the commission was thinking. Because we were all thinking, well, we want to limit basically the football games, which produces noise to the PA and, and if it occurs in the evening, it produces light impacts. So I think that's true. I think so. And/or, all day, either if you have lights or and/or sound through the PA, then that's one of the events.
Mr. Walker, and then we're going to have to make a mo-, someone's got to make a motion.
My suggestion was going to be to change it to 10 days per year. That, I think that clarifies Mr. Strike's position.
Does day open the door to somebody saying, "It's not a day event, it's an evening event"? Mr. Spring's comment of "all events using the lights and/or sound systems are limited to 10 events per year", and I remind everyone, the football code said we've got maybe five football games. And that, you know, we gave them, we went from five to 10 rather generously. And so, that's where we are. Mr. Walker, are you back in the queue?
Finished, thank you.
Mr. Robinson?
Thank you. I have another question, but similar to, you know, what we were discussing without having the minutes here. And that is that the second finding, I'm sort of unclear on what we're intending with that. First of all, the block of findings in number one, I think, could be separated out a little bit. I think there's a couple of findings in there, but that said, I think you can glean what you're going for. But it says, "Number two, the school district could have provided another degree of mitigation in favor of the private property owners who will have to live with the facility into the future." I'm not sure where that comes from and what that means. I mean, I made the finding in number one that said I felt like they've done a pretty good job to mitigate the issues. This seems to indicate that they should have, and should have, and we are saying that they should have and could have done more, but what then were we suggesting? And again, without being able to go back and review the minutes, I don't know where that was coming from. So perhaps someone can shed light on that for me.
May I?
Mr. Walker, and then Ms. McConnell, if you want to weigh in. You're welcome to.
So I think what that's in reference to is I did make a comment about flipping the bleachers, which was one of the suggestions. And if I had, I think if I had all the information, I wouldn't have made that comment. But afterward, I did speak to a couple of the engineers that were here, and they explained to me that there were some other mitigating factors that were not considered and that really weren't brought up in the public testimony or in the applicant's presentation that I think actually eliminated the need for that particular mitigation, which was to flip the bleachers. And I did make a comment, which-
No, and I, and I agree, and if I may, Mr. Chair, I mean, in that case, the issue to me is, there was a report that had more mitigation measures than what the school district adopted. That was one of them, I believe you were on record as saying you would rather them doing that. But I think the rest of the body, the majority in the decision, felt that that was not accurate. So I think, I think, you know, I would be more in favor of sort of reframing that to say, while, you know, some, either just getting it out completely or saying, while there were other mitigation measures, you know, in one of the noise reports, the body felt that those that were selected were sufficient in this, in this case. Because I just, I'm really uncomfortable with that finding as is.
I would not object if you changed it to the majority of the body felt, okay, Ms. Robinson? I will say, I will agree, I felt they should have made other steps, but I did not have the majority of the body, and I understand that. But I would like to sort of tie, get this thing done in order so we don't bounce all over. I would prefer if we could handle five and then go to two, if that's okay with, if nobody in the body objects. Okay, Mr. Strike? Anyone have any changes?
Mr. Fair?
What?
I apologize for interrupting, but the secretary's just informed me that the minutes from that meeting are actually here in your packets for next week, so we can hand those out. If you want, you could push this to the end of the agenda and we could hash it out.
Well, except, pardon me, according to your email, it says that we should take this up first, shall have priority over regular agenda items and shall be approved. And so I'm trying to honor the instructions from the attorney, Ms. McConnell, and-
That is true, but I really doubt that anyone will object if you want to push it to the end of the meeting.
On this case, I will not do that.
But I'll hand out your packets so that you can look at the minutes, if you like?
I don't want to be sitting here trying to answer, I mean, it's like laid-on-the-table information is the way I take it. I do appreciate the fact that they're here on it, but if we were going to do that, we should postpone this. And Ms. Dean says she doesn't want this next week, which I can appreciate. And so we would end up postponing it for basically a month, which by then we would have the minutes and what may give us more time to work our way through this language. So you've got a couple of choices. We could go one and work our way through it, or we could postpone it for a month and take, and work when we'd have the minutes and go that way. That's at least two options. There's eight of us, so there's several more options out there. Mr. Robinson, you're top of the queue currently.
I think that was from before, but I'd like to make a motion that we approve Resolution 2015-001 related to case 2014-0183. I'm prepared to support the motion, but I believe there's a couple of necessary amendments to that motion, and I'd like to offer the first one, please.
Go ahead, please.
I'd like to offer that we strike finding number two.
Do you have a couple more you want to make at the same time?
I think we'll just do one at a time here.
Okay. On motion 2015, or case 2015-001, we have a motion to approve with an amendment to strike. That's all we need, the lights to go out.
If I may speak to that amendment?
Okay, we have a second by Mr. Spring, yes, you may.
I believe if you look at finding number one, there's some language that says the school district has provided extensive mitigation methods and goes on to list those. I think it's fairly clear by our testimony and by the findings that you can always do more, but I believe the issue is here as it pertains to the standards of the site plan approval was whether they've done enough. And I believe that we, as a body, found that we had.
Okay. Mr. Walker, then Ms. Dean, on this, on this motion.
That was left over from before.
Ms. Dean?
Commissioner Robinson, could you please clarify? Was that A2 or B2 that you were referring to, striking item two? A or B? Because there's two sections, there's A1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and then there's B1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7.
Now, this is just finding A2.
Thank you.
On the first page.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Spring?
Yeah, I'll be supporting the motion. I mean, I think we all, we all believe that there was a, the change of the stands might, was, could have potentially made a difference, somewhat of a difference in the sound levels, but we also concluded, and other people concluded, that it was going to really wreck the site plan and cause a real problem with the location of the drainage and possibly remove some of the vegetation. So unless we want to continue to elaborate on this particular sentence, we would go on and on and on, and I think we should just strike it.
In light of Mr. Strike's comment that we should go through these in order, can I take this motion as an assumption? Mr. Robinson, you have no objection to A1?
Oh, yeah, I think short of wordsmithing the whole thing, I just, yeah, I'm fine with A1, yes, sir.
All righty. We have a motion to strike findings two, which reads, "The school district could have provided another degree of mitigation in favor of private property owners who will have to live with the facility into the future. Can we use our machines? We had a motion, yes, thank you. That motion has passed. Mr. Robinson, you were on a roll, you want to continue?
Well, I, I know we said we'd go right through them, but I'm ready to just make a motion to amend, let's see, the, the, the condition number five and to rewrite that. I think what I heard, and part of why I want to hear myself say it, because I-
Hold up for one second. Does anyone have any changes they would want to make on A3, 4, or 5? Or B1, 2, 3, or 4? Mr. Strike?
Yes, I would make a motion on section B1 that we remove the term substantially.
That is fairly common language, and I think it's put in there because you may have a situation where they say something's going to be 100 feet and ends up being 100 feet point one or 98.5. I would not support removing the word substantially. It just would open a big can of worms.
We have gone through one, two, three public hearings on this topic. We have had months of activity on this, and there has been a constant theme of distrust that has been rampant throughout all the testimony that occurred. We finally have a, and we've seen this in the past with other presenters on other pieces for conditional uses, and we look for ways to say, how do we put teeth in it? How do we ensure that we're going to get what was agreed on by the parties?
Okay, you've made a motion to delete B1, the word substantially. It's been seconded. You want, you or Ms. Dean want to have anything to say? Anyone else have anything to say? Please use your machines to vote. That motion, that motion went down to defeat five to three. So you, that did not carry. Does anyone have anything prior to five?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Strike?
Yes, on section B2, where it states, "The petitioner will monitor area after football events and remove any garbage", I make the motion that we remove "football" to leave it at "any events". This was not, we have 10 events occurring at the site, and they're not limited to just football.
So on B2, we're changing the word "football" to "any"?
Or just deleting "after events"?
Okay, after events. We have a second by Mr. Walker. Does anyone have any discussion?
Could you please repeat, we're just, remove any garbage is stricken?
No, we're removing the one-word "football".
Thank you.
Petitioner will monitor area after events and remove any garbage. Okay? We have a motion, we have a second. Please use your machines. Has that motion carried? Anyone have any changes to three or four? Mr. Robinson, you're on on five. Whoa, whoa. Walker Sr. over there next to him, laid on the button again. Go ahead, Mr. Strike.
We had also talked about the baseball field that was in testimony at the same time. And so, my motion is to add inclusion to say stadium and ballfield activities.
A point of order, I mean, we're dealing with a site plan review that has to do with a football stadium, not the entire management of this site at this point. I mean, we're opening up everything that happens on the, on the school property at this point, which was not what we heard.
Then, then I would limit it to say stadium activities shall be in by 10:00 PM. Replacing ballfield with stadium.
So on paragraph four, it's stadium activities for junior varsity, varsity football and soccer games shall end by 10:00. Here. That, is that your motion?
Yes.
We have a second by Mr. Robinson. Any discussion? Please use your- Please use your machines. That motion passed. May I go to five? Mr. Robinson, I think you're up again on five.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. What I heard was to modify five to say, "Events using the lights and/or sound system are limited to 10 events per year."
Okay, you are not including the word all in there. You're just, you're starting with events.
That's right.
Okay. So you're changing five to read, "Events using the lights and/or sound system are limited to 10 events per year." We have a motion, we have a second. Ms. McConnell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would just like to comment that should that wording be approved, the planning department would define or interpret event as a particular game. So if there was a soccer game and a football game on the same day, the interpretation from the office would be, that would be two events. That's, that is the way the word event is used in a lot of other situations. Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification. Does that change your motion, Mr. Robinson?
It does not.
Mr. Cange, does that change your second? Do we have any further discussion on this motion?
Thank you, Mr. Ferguson. From Ms. McConnell's comment, that kind of changes, that changes the ability to have two events occur in one day and only have nine. Or if this is just for evening events, what I'm trying to do is not have, say, maybe circumstances of track and field meet in the morning, and then have a football game that afternoon and have two events in one day. And run into a problem down the road.
Well, I think that even if we left it what it said, based upon the information furnished by Ms. McConnell, it wouldn't change. I mean, she's informed us that event would be an individual event. That makes sense.
I'm under the assumption from Ms. McConnell's comment that you can have two events in one day, and that would count as two events against the 10, correct?
That's how I interpret what she says, what she said.
And I think what Mr. Strike was pointing out earlier is that an event is an all-day event. You could have a track and field, a soccer game, a football game, and that would be considered one event. Is that correct?
That is what I had stated, but then I've also got to go back to what the record had stated, and I think it is clear that they had asked for 10 events, meaning five events for football, is what the testimony was originally given, and they settled for 10 events. And so at this point, they get to manage their 10 events, is my thinking now, based on the interpretation from staff. It's up to them to manage their 10 events now.
I'm good with that. Thank you.
Mr. Robinson?
I was just going to say, I think that is, I think that is two separate events in that case. I think the only issue that becomes a little bit complicated is if you have a JV game and they turn the lights on a little bit early and in twilight as it moves into the full game, and they're going to count it as two, and that's what's going to happen. I think the intent was, the school district's just going to have to manage it. I was uneasy with 10. I wanted more. I thought that they were handcuffing themselves, but that was what they agreed to. That's what staff wrote, and I think that's what we discussed.
Mr. Sporhees.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chair. So I guess a question for staff is, if this came in front of you, would you look at a C game, a junior varsity game, and a varsity game as three events, or as one?
To the chair, Mr. Sporhees, I think each game would be considered an event from our perspective. So if the commission desires to that not be the way we look at it, they need to be more, you need to be more specific in your finding, or, I'm sorry, in your condition.
Thank you.
Mr. Robinson?
Do they charge admission for the football game, and is it one admission? Or do you pay every time for each of those games? You don't pay three times. You pay to go to the event. Actually, I don't know.
But I mean, the earlier, earlier events during the day, chances are they would not use, that's, that's the school district's option to manage. And obviously, we've got competing needs here, and we're cutting the birthday cake, and that's what we got to do. Mr. Robinson, your motion was, "Events using the lights and/or sound system are limited to 10 events per year." You had a second by Mr. Cange, I think, or somebody, who seconded that? Okay. Do we have any further discussion? Can we please use our machines? That motion passed. Mr. Robinson, you started with a motion on 2015-001. I think we need to come back to that motion and vote on that as modified by this group.
I'm ready to call a question, sir.
Go, go, go.
Do I need to re-put it, or are we just ready?
Yeah, make a motion again, please. We have a motion from Mr. Robinson to approve Finding and Zoning Commission Number 2015-001 as modified, denied, seconded by Mr. Cange. Any discussion? Please use your machines. That passed. Now, before we go any further, tonight's our night to back up. I would like to back up to Resolution 2014-056, the Government Hill Resolution that we approved as part of the consent agenda. I just want to point out that that was correcting an error earlier, and see if that changes anyone's mind at a wrong plan map, and it was cited in the resolution text. Does anyone care to make a change their vote or make a motion on that? Let the record show that the commission considered that, and let the resolution pass. Now, Mr. Spring, we're going, we've got minutes in front of us from December 1st, December 8th, December 8th, and November 10th. You indicated to me earlier that you wanted to pull one or some of those.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'd like to pull the minutes from November 10th, 2014, to make a minor edit.
Okay, what is your edit?
On page four of seven, last paragraph, I think, second sentence. Instead of, let me see, this should be, have been investigated and recognized during the site plan review, I'd like to change that to, this should have been investigated and recognized during the public facility site plan review. My intent was that this particular fire department location wasn't, I don't believe, fully investigated in terms of access, and there was oversight, I think, and, or, I don't know, for whatever reason, the OT didn't really comment on it, and came back too late to really do anything about the selection, and they had to jerry-rig the site plan to make it work, and it doesn't work all that well. So if they did, had done it right, it would have been the public facility site plan review step where they would have identified this problem, and that's what I intended to say. It's minor, but worth changing.
Okay, so you're making a motion to modify the November 10 minutes. We've got a motion by Commissioner Spring, seconded by Ms. Dean. Do we have any objection to the modification? Seeing and hearing none, that is approved. We have the minutes from the December 1st and December 8th meeting. Do we have any changes to those minutes? Seeing and hearing none, those are approved. Now, Ms. McConnell, is, Ms. McConnell, is our applicant here for the case G2?
Yes, Mr. Chair, he is.
Or, we're going to start with G2? Or G, can we start with G1?
The applicant for G1 is here, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Would you mind handling G3 and G4, which I understand will be postponed?
The chair had discussions with staff, and there was confusion with what we had done and that we weren't clear on the public hearing. So I asked staff to put on the website that cases G3 and G4 would be postponed to March 2nd?
9th would be better.
Okay. So the chair would appreciate a motion to postpone cases G3 and G4 to March 9. Thank you, Mr. Spring. That is seconded by Mr. Cange. Do we have any, any discussion? Any discussion at all? Okay, those cases are postponed to March 9. Okay, we start with G1 or G2? Everybody caught up? We will now take up Case 2014-0194, a request to rezone approximately 3.46 acres from R6 SL and R10 to R6 in the Charlie subdivision. We have a staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The petitioner's requesting to rezone his property from R6 with special limitations and R10 to straight R6, so that he may subdivide the property into two lots. The petition site contains 3.46 acres, and a special limitation of the zoning prohibits further subdivision. That assembly ordinance is on page 12 of your packet that contains the special limitation. The proposed rezoning to R6 would both eliminate the split zoning with R10, with the R10 district, and remove the special limitation prohibiting further subdividing. The department supports eliminating the split zoning of the lot, but not deleting the special limitation. Removal of the existing special limitation would allow the petition site to be subdivided into as many as three lots, which is an increase in residential density over what would have been allowed under the original R10 zoning. Also, rezoning the petition site to straight R6 district is not congruent with the two R6 SL-zoned lots to the west, or the R10 zoning of the lots to the northeast and south. Rezoning to R6 with no special limitation would allow smaller lots than are permitted under the R6 SL and R10 districts. The Chugiyak Eagle River Comprehensive Plan Update Vacant Land Suitability Map identifies the petition site as marginally suitable land. The petition site is affected by topography and is located near an avalanche area. Given the environmental constraints, the petition site and the surrounding R10 zoning on three sides, the department recommends remaining the special limitation of the R6 portion of the property that prohibits further subdividing. A draft ordinance is on page nine of your packet. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, this is a public hearing. The procedure by which the public may speak to the commission at this meeting is, after the staff presentation is completed on public hearing items, the chair will ask for public testimony on this issue. Persons who wish to testify will follow the time limits established in the commission rules and procedures. Petitioners, including all his or her representatives, 10 minutes. Part of this time may be reserved for rebuttal. Representatives of groups, community councils, PTAs, five minutes. Individual, three minutes. When your testimony is complete, you may be asked questions by the commission. You may only testify once on any issue unless questioned by the commission. An individual may have appeal rights relating to action the Planning and Zoning Commission takes, except commission recommendations to this assembly which are not appealable. Appeals may be filed with the clerk's office within 20 days after approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission of the resolution, which is the commission's final decision. A fee for the appeal is required at the time of filing. Any individual may request written findings from the commission decision within seven days. We have three lights up here. When it goes to yellow, you have one minute left on your time. Is the petitioner present on this case? Come up, please state your name for the record, and I think we have the spelling, so go ahead.
Good evening. My name's Kent Devine. I have lived in this subdivision area for the last 38 years, 30 years, and my wife and I had purchased this property, 3.6 acres, with the intent, my son has recently moved back to the state, and he and his fiancee are looking for a piece of property that they can build on, and we thought that this would be a good opportunity for us to provide them with an affordable piece of property. Thus, I decided to buy this property and then make the attempt to go ahead and get the zoning changed. The R10 part of this property, I believe, is basically a house cleaning issue. It should have been taken care of some time ago. We have thoughts that we would like to subdivide this property into two, one point, what'd I say, 7, 3 acres, almost, a little over 3, one and three-quarter acres. Not a very small lot on the R6 category. It's really pretty large for that size, and only about a third of an acre smaller than the local lots in the area. Oh, excuse me, I would like to request five minutes at the end. Is that, I should have done that first, I'm sorry.
We got you five minutes.
Let's see. We feel that the lot, the land itself, the topography, is about the same as the subdivisions in the local area. The Majestic Valley subdivision that we currently live in is just almost adjacent to this property, and the slopes and conditions are almost identical, and it's been a wonderful subdivision for years. The, I know that there is concern that there might be a higher density of development in this area. We would like to assure everyone involved that we are talking about two lots, we're talking about potentially, and no multifamily, high-density type of structures on those lots, as far as I'm concerned, if the, if we wanted to, I would be happy to put a special limitation on my subdivision also, that it could not be subdivided any more than the two lots. I'm happy with that. I'd be happy to answer any other questions that people may have on this.
Mr. Walker, then Mr. Spring.
I'm going to ask this question of you, the applicant, but maybe the staff could jump in if we get stumped here. So we are, basically, this is an application for a rezone, but it seems to me like, wouldn't it have been just as simple to try and replat this thing while you're, I mean, come to us for both the rezone and the replat?
The law requires zoning changes first.
Okay. Now, the, so you've asked to remove the special limitation?
Yes.
That currently exists. That special limitation, will that limit you from subdividing the site into the two lots?
I'm sorry, I am deaf in my right ear, so I-
Oh, I'm sorry. So if the special limitation is not removed, will that limit your ability to, will that limit your plan?
We will not be able to subdivide this- We will not be able to subdivide this property any further without the removal of that special limitation.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Spring?
Yeah, thank you, through the Chair. It looks like the lot is kind of divided by a couple ravines.
Yes.
I couldn't tell, it didn't have any pictures, so I couldn't really tell. Looks like there's, one ravine is on the, I guess it would be the eastern border of the property and one kind of splits the property in the middle.
No, both the ravines are on the extreme edges of the property. One on the basically northwest and one on the southeast.
Okay.
It does not split the property.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Spohies?
Well, thank you, Mr. Commissioner. Since this is evening of backing things up and I was so worried about everyone else's disclosures, I should disclose that I went Eagle River at the same time, I believe, as the petitioner's son, Chugiyak Kress? And I didn't, I didn't recognize that until, actually, it's been so long, I didn't even know where he lived.
Right.
I wanted to disclose that, full disclosure and all. And I have no economic benefit in this going forward.
Okay. I don't believe that gets you out. Please participate. Mr. Spring, then Ms. Dean. Ms. Dean?
Through the Chair, I was going to ask staff to do clarification for the public here at the meeting. There is some concern that this may become potentially multifamily housing. So could you guys define for us how many dwellings can be on a lot in R6? Just to clarify, so everybody knows that's here.
Through the, through the Chair, Ms. Dean. Okay, so the R6 district-
This is old code?
Yes, the R6 district, old code. Single-family house requires an acre and a quarter. A duplex requires 2 and 1/2 acres. And a triplex requires 3 and 3/4 acres. This property is just under 3 and 1/2 acres. However, the R6 district, in old code, allows counting half the abutting right-of-way. You're allowed to count half the abutting right-of-way towards your minimum lot area. So depending on how much curving road the property is abutting, you could potentially, that would increase your minimum lot area. It'd go from just under 3 and 1/2 to, I'm not sure.
Thank you.
Commissioner Spring?
Yeah, just to follow, this might be a staff question, actually. It looks like when this parcel was originally rezoned as a part of a bigger parcel, it was, a limitation was put on to be only, allow only three parcels. But then subsequently, for whatever reason, the owner of the parcel resubdivided and added additional land to that, which included the R10 part. Why they didn't, why they allowed a split-lot zoning, I don't know. Was it implied that they would have to go back and get a rezone to eliminate that? And I guess my point is, which hasn't been brought out, is that additional land was added to the parcel over and above what was originally included in the rezone, which limited to three. So in effect, I wonder what would have happened if, you know, the parcel was, you know, the size it is now, when it was rezoned, whether they would have limited it to three parcels or whether they would have allowed maybe additional subdivision, because obviously it's bigger. But is there a reason why they didn't require a, did they require a rezone to eliminate the split lot?
Through the Chair, Mr. Spring. You've pointed out something that's mentioned in the staff report as well, but is a sort of a real head-scratcher for this case. And I've, staff has talked with the owner of the property, Mr. Devine, about it as well. The page 48 of your packet begins the historical information. I've included the staff report, all of the minutes, you know, everything I could in the case packet. But 13 years ago, when this rezone and replat was done, you know, I just, I can't figure out why, why property was added to create this split zoning. It's been a longstanding policy not to create split-zone lots. And it's prohibited in the new Title 21 Code. But that's what we have here now. But it is confusing and I, I'm sorry that I can't offer an explanation on why that was allowed to happen.
Through the Chair, just one more, other point, I guess, I'm making, talking to myself mostly, I guess. It does make sense, I think, to have replatted it because of the ravines that, you know, are on both sides of the property. And it does seem like it'd be, make sense to combine it or add the R10 to this particular zoning, just because it seems like an obvious move to me, but.
I was hoping you'd answer all my questions there.
Yeah, excuse me, I, it's, I believe, my guess on this whole situation about the R10 was that it happened during the planning process and not during the zoning process. And I don't know if anybody here is actually part of the plating staff, you know, as far as that goes, that may have some answers to those questions, too.
In the Department's recommendation, which is for approval of the rezone but a continuation of the special limitation, that does not meet what you want to do, is that correct?
That's correct. We definitely would like to see the R10 removed, but at the very least, but we do need to have the R6 and the SL changed in order to subdivide. Then we would have to go through the plating process and then let the plating folks work with us on whether we can actually successfully plat this into two lots, according to the rules and regulations with regard to slopes and soils and all that that comes into the engineering that happens during the plating process.
Mr. Cange?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a survey of the plating board. And one thing that staff moved to, that we should have included on here, talk about the adjoining right-of-way, lot size, and that-
But allow this to potentially have multifamily, because that seems to be a lot of the concern from the comments we received. So without knowing that exact number, unfortunately, I wouldn't be able to support this if there was a motion to be made. I think it's imperative that we know exactly how much of this right-of-way to give the full size for, you know, potential building.
Thank you very much. I see no other questions in the queue. You've got 6 and 1/2, or 6 point, almost 7 minutes left. We'll open the public hearing and then you'll have a time to rebut.
Very good, thank you.
On case 20, uh, case 2014-0194, anyone wish to speak? Come on, please come forward. State your name and spell a name for us.
Hi, my name is Arlene Rasick. A-R-L-E-N-E-R-A-S-I-C. And our address is 26637 White Spruce Drive. My husband and I, our family, are owners of Track A2, which is located directly above this track in the zoning request. The zone request, as you know, is two parts. One is to remove the R10 Alpine portion and also to remove the special limitation restricting the density to one dwelling on the R6 lot. We purchased our lot in 86. And at that time, the homesteader had informed me of his intent to have Charlotte subdivision only in three lots, that is only separated by the natural terrain of gullies and steep slopes and only allow one home per lot. This is the main reason why we built in this area. This density restriction is what appealed to us and all of the existing neighbor property owners. Five of the six, four of the five property owners all signed the petition, not wanting to have the special limitations removed. And the remaining property owner is the one who did the original assembly and he doesn't believe that it would get removed. Anyway, Charlotte subdivision is a small and unique subdivision. It provides a transition from your smaller-lot subdivision in 1 to 1 and 1/2 acres to a larger parcel that is undeveloped, R10. There are many established subdivisions. You go from Thunderbird Falls to Golden View Estates and they all have certain qualities and covenants and characteristics of their subdivision. Homeowners buy their property because of the quality and attributes of what the subdivision offers. And to change the zoning of the subdivision later only diminishes the value and the character of the neighborhood. As an adjacent property owners, we do understand that the split zone needs to be resolved, but we do not support removing the special limitation at all. I concur with the municipal staff's recommendation to keep the special limitations on Track A3C. Thank you, any questions?
Any questions? Mr. Walker?
Do you know how big your lot is?
Yes, I have 2.5 acres.
Okay. And is there a, is there, are there covenants in your-
No, it was set up with the special limitations and all the, and the whole family had a concurred verbal agreement with everybody. So this is just the new property owners are asking for a change.
I see, thank you.
Commissioner Strike?
Yes, thank you. Does your property, it abuts the applicant's property?
The roads between it, or the partial part of the road, the road, only a small portion of the road is actually developed.
What's the rest of your property?
Oh, then it goes to the driveway.
No, you're 2 and 1/2-
I'm above it, yeah, I'm above that lot, that 3 and 1/2 acre lot.
I guess I'm trying to look at a map here to see where your property-
You're on White Spruce Drive?
Yes, sir, Track A2.
Ours is the track numbers in.
Page 21 of your packet shows, page 21 of your packet will show the Track A-2. It's kind of hard to read.
Okay, I see that, thank you.
So it's on, it's across the road?
Yes.
From him? Okay.
Any further questions?
No.
Thank you for your testimony.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else please choose to testify? Anyone else at all? Going once? Going twice? Okay. Mr. Devon, you've got 6 and 1/2, or 6 point, 6 and 1/5, almost 7 minutes to rebut.
Right. Well, I think what I would like to say here is that the gentleman that made the subdivision originally is not opposed to me taking the actions that I'm asking for. The adjoining neighbors that Arlene and Steve are a part of, I know they don't want to see change in the neighborhood. I don't think that my proposal is going to make a significant change in our neighborhood. We're talking about adding basically one more lot to, because we're going to build on that property. Now whether we build one house or two houses, it's about the same. So as far as that goes, I believe that that's the case. The, as far as the large lots in the neighborhood, I still maintain that 1.7 acres is still a large lot. And thus, I would like to see it changed. Again, if there was a need to put a special limitations on my ability to subdivide any farther than that or even to put more than a single-family residence on that property, I'd be happy to do so, because that's, you know, we have no intention of doing duplexes, apartments, or anything like that. So this is strictly for, basically, in-family. We intend to keep this property in our family for a long time. And if there's any other further questions, I-
I do not see any further questions in the queue. You may have a seat, thank you.
Thank you.
Public testimony on case 2014-0194 is now closed. Mr. Spring?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval of the rezone from R6 SL and R10 to R6 with a special limitation recommended by staff, limiting the parcel to a development of one single-family unit.
Mr. Robinson, then I have a question. You seconded, do you have any comments? Your limitation to one single-family residence per lot for a total of two? Are you, you're-
The, excuse me, yes, the rezone is for one parcel. So the recommendation for the, recommend approval of the rezone of the parcel would limit it to one single-family unit. And so it wouldn't, just one per this particular parcel. This isn't a replat.
Okay. Any discussion?
I'd like to-
Through the Chair, Mr. Spring. So staff is recommending the elimination of the R10, rezoning to R6 SL with the special limitations carried forward from the, the pre, the special limitation remain intact from before. And so that special limitation is on line 22 on page 12 of your packet. The property shall not be subdivided into more than three lots. That's, so it has been subdivided into three lots. So the draft ordinance that staff has prepared is on page 9 and it just, it says on line 19, it says, "Section 2, the zoning map amendment is subject to the listed restrictions." It's referring to the other ordinance. So could you just explain to me so that I write this up correctly after the hearing? I just want to understand the part about single, limiting the property to single-family houses. Did you intend to add that in, in addition to this?
Well, there was supplement, there would supersede the original ordinance, limiting the subdivision to three lots. In effect, it's not, that no longer applies since one of the parcels was resubdivided and added additional land to it. So it's not the same subdivision that you're talking about in the original rezoning in 2002. So I don't believe that would apply, that original language, since it's a different parcel than originally.
If I could just quibble through the Chair, Mr. Spring, with this action, it would. We've, we have it worded, so you're, you're, you're carrying forward that language from the past to this particular property as it is now. So we believe that it works, but, but, but thank you for pointing that out.
Okay.
Mr. Walker, then Ms. Spohies.
So effectively, if we, I mean, I'm kind of looking at you, John, when I'm asking this, we're basically denying his, his request or his desire to further subdivide this lot at any point in the future.
That's correct. Right, that's correct, that's the intent.
All right.
That's the condition.
Okay. How do you feel about the fact that everything west of this lot, I mean, every, every subdivision lot to the west of this is about 1.75 acres, which is effectively what he's proposing for this? I mean, you're, I mean, I guess I just want to, I was curious to-
I was going to make, that's a good point. I, I-
I appreciate your observation. However, when looking at the original case for the rezoning, it appears that the three parcel rezoned back in two thousand and two, limited to three, three developments, three lots. And when the staff analysis showed that if it had remained as R-ten, that the slopes would have limited it to one, maybe two. So they actually got one extra lot in there over and above what the R-ten would have allowed. So I'm assuming that this particular parcel probably wouldn't have even have allowed one, one house on it under the old R-ten zoning. So, and in fact, they've gotten what they wanted with the original rezoning. Now they're coming back for a second bite at it and it seems to me that the slopes won't allow, it won't really permit it. It's not really consistent with, you know, the overall Title Twenty-One code pertaining to slopes. I mean, the R-ten was designed to limit development in steep slope areas to something that it could carry, the carrying capacity. And I think this exceeds the carrying capacity of this particular part of the Eagle River Valley.
Mr. Sporhees?
No, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I got a little rub on that, John, is that, you know, here this guy's got almost three and a half acres and he wants to divide it into two or maybe three lots. And we're taking, you know, the R-ten zoning away, but maybe when I read this at first, I was under the assumption that his property should not be subdivided more than three lots and that would still give over an acre plus lot. That's the way I originally read this when, when I was looking at your guys' proposal.
Well, through the chair, I could think it was directed to me, but I think it's something staff could probably elaborate on a little bit easier. It appeared, I think the three lot limitation was the limitation on the original rezone of the larger parcel. This is only one, one lot of the three lot subdivision that was originally rezoned in two thousand and two. So now that limitation does not limit this parcel that's subject to the petition, the rezon petition, to three lots. This is one of the three lots that was allowed under the old zoning. So they're coming back and asking for another, another lot on this one. And in fact, if it was, would have been allowed if the original rezoning permitted four lots and then some, it could have created another one somewhere in the sub, this, this, the original parcel that was rezoned, but currently it's not allowed.
Anybody have any other comments? Mr. Robinson?
No, I appreciate Mr. Spring's clarification, as well as the findings that he made and rationale for supporting the, the motion. You know, I think, I think the issue of R-ten really comes down to, you know, analyzing the slope. I believe that analysis happened back in two thousand and two and I don't think I've seen anything here to sort of negate that the steepness is not an issue. But I think the thing that the commission can facilitate is, is removing the split zone and allow that one lot to be more easily developed. But, but I would concur with, with Mr. Spring and support his motion that I think the, the limitation should be extended.
Thank you. Mr. Spring, could you please restate your motion?
Thank you. I believe it does need to be restated. Yes, I'd like to move to recommend approval of the rezoning from R-six SL and R-ten to R-six with a special limitation that would limit the parcel subject to the rezoning to one single family dwelling.
Mr. McLaughlin, is that, is that clear to you?
I wish I could say yes, but I, so what I heard was that rezoning to R-six SL with a special limitation limiting the property to one single family house. But I guess, I'm trying to think of all possibilities, well, you know, staff analysis has pointed out that under this R-six zoning, you could subdivide the property into as many as three lots under the new code and then you'd have one single family house per lot. So the, the way staff has chosen to go with this, the form wise, is to say, carry forward the special limitation from the past, which is prohibiting any further subdivision of the property.
Mr. Spring?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I think staff has a good point. Perhaps it'd be better worded to limit the, not permit additional re-subdivision of the parcel.
Okay, now is that not what the recommendation on page eight basically says?
I think they're pretty similar, I believe. The only question I had, and I guess staff disagrees, is that this is a new parcel that wasn't subject to the original, may not really be subject to the original subdivision because they added additional land in R-ten.
That throws a wrinkle we're all trying to deal with. Okay. Now, Mr. McLaughlin, does that clarify from your perspective? Are you, are you clear now?
So I think, thank you, Mr. Chair. I think I've heard Mr. Spring rephrase to say limiting the parcel, let's see.
Prohibiting re-subdivision of the parcel.
That, that works fine.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Sporhees?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm kind of perplexed in the sense that the petitioner said that they would like to build another house on there for their son and so you're telling them that a guy with three and a half acres, probably more land than anyone else in the subdivision, doesn't have the ability or flexibility to do that? Is that what I understand?
That is what Mr. Spring's motion says, in my interpretation.
I'd like to, if possible, could we call the petitioner back up at this point? I know public testimony is closed.
You may ask the petitioner to come back up and speak.
Mr. Devlin, would you like to come back up? What it seems like that's kind of happening here and over the course of events is that you've got more ample land according to, I believe, the new code, but you're restricted on only a single family lot or single family residence right now on a three and a half acre parcel. And your intent was to divide that into three parcels, correct?
No.
Or just two?
Just two.
Okay, I thought I read.
Divide it in half.
Just divide it in half. I thought I'd read in here somewhere that the petitioner was looking to divide it into three lots, but.
That was the old case that got us to this case.
Thank you. So.
And I believe part of that is confusing in that the definition of R-six would technically allow that much subdivision in that much of an area, I guess, if I'm not mistaken. Yeah.
Correct. Okay.
So there, there's an additional confusion with that three number.
Sure. So just kind of, since you're a little more familiar with this, maybe could you kind of help me out with the sequence of events? We got to come to planning and zoning here to get the zoning approved to go to plating and then the plating is where the engineering study takes place and it looks at the soils if it's buildable.
Correct. Before I can do anything else, I have to have the zoning changed and without the zoning changed, then we're kind of at a standstill.
And I think that's where the crux of my dilemma is there, Mr. Chair, is that he's got enough land to do what he wants to do. It hasn't really even been studied yet and we're, we're telling him basically that he can't subdivide it to his son.
That's what he was told in the past. That's where the, that's where the problem comes from. Do you have anything else?
Not at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Devon. Mr. Spring?
Yes, all right. I need another clarification from staff if I may. My original motion restricted it to single family and I removed it based on, to recall to prohibit a re-subdivision. If I could ask staff, if it's rezoned with that restriction, can you build, is it possible to build a multifamily house on the R-six, this R-six parcel?
Through the chair, yes, you could build a duplex. You've said rezoning to R-six SL prohibiting further subdivision. With three and almost a half acres, you could do duplex under old code. I'd have to flip to the new code to see if.
The new code would prohibit it?
No, no, I'd have to flip to the new.
Okay.
See if, 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 if it, I think it'd probably be about the same.
A follow-up question if I may, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
The other parcels in the original subdivision that are zoned R-six SL, I believe they're developed with single family, but they could be developed as duplexes also, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Nothing would prohibit that. Okay.
Yeah.
Mr. Sporhees, and then we're going to do something.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. This question's from Mr. McLaughlin. I apologize, I'm not too familiar with residential zoning. Is there a residential zoning that would limit them to a single family house if they were able to subdivide this lot and only a single family?
Through the chair, Mr. Sporhees, the R-six district, suburban, large lot residential district, in this area, all the R-six, I believe, is developed with single family on approximately one acre lots. That's, that's the neighborhood to the, to the west. I don't know of any duplexes in this area. When I drove through the streets, I just saw a single family house.
Sure.
But, but the zoning R-six, if you have enough lot area, you can have a duplex or, or more. It just so happens that the neighborhood's developed, I believe, with single family houses and is probably locked into that because of the lot area that they have. They don't have enough lot area now for, for duplexes. The R-ten district only allows single family. So the, the land to the east of this is R-ten and when it's subdivided, because of the zoning R-six, which is not R, I'm sorry, the zoning R-ten, which is not R-six, it can, it's, that zoning only allows single family residential. But the R-six is a different zoning district, different rules and allows duplexes and triplexes if you, if you have enough land area.
So maybe a follow-up question, is there a way to do, leave it as R-six, they could split the lot up and have a special limitation where it's only a single family?
Yes, there's a lot of options. The petitioner has offered a special limitation verbally here tonight, that he would be fine with a special limitation, limiting him to creation of only one additional lot and he'd be fine probably with limiting it to single family detached housing as well. But, but yeah, he's, yeah.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. McLaughlin. So given the petitioner's verbal testimony that they'd be okay with a single family lot, we could put a stipulation on, on that R-six, so there will never be a duplex on that, correct?
Yeah, you can, the, the commission can craft this however they want. Mr. Spring is, is, has stated, made the motion prohibiting further subdivision and that's where, that's where we're at.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor by Mr. Spring, seconded by Mr. Robinson. Any further discussion on that motion? Mr. Sporhees?
Well, thank you. And this is kind of, just to kind of circle my thoughts here is that it seems like we've got the opportunity to both stay within the code moving forward and give the petitioner the opportunity to further explore, to subdivide an extremely large lot in the subdivision with the ability to limit that to a single family home, to take that to plating, to see if that's even plausible.
What I hear you saying is that you may not be supporting the motion on the floor.
The short version is that's correct.
Thank you. Mr. Walker?
I was going to save this for findings, but I'll just share this with you now, Brandon. So, I mean, I, I was leaning in the same direction, I think, but the thing that I'm having the hardest time getting over is in the original resolution for the three, the plat that occurred in two thousand and two, it specifically says that it won't be subdivided into more than three lots. And that was on the record when the petitioner bought the site. So that's kind of a, that's a tough thing to get around. And if we, if we remove the special limitations now, I mean, if the special limitation is on us, then plating can't put it back later on. So that's the thing I'm having the hardest time getting over. So I think I find that, you know, with this, the fact that it was already on the record that it can't be split, I don't, I kind of feel like our hands are tied here.
I agree, Mr. Walker. Thank you. And I'm under the impression from the petitioner that the original developer of this subdivision does not have a problem with this. So I'm just trying to.
All right, I'd like to get this thing moving forward.
Call upon order, sure.
On, we have a motion on case twenty-fourteen oh one nine four by Commissioner Spring, seconded by Mr. Robinson. Could you please use your machines? That motion has carried. One, two, three, that motion has passed. Anyone have any findings on that?
Yeah, I'd like to make a couple.
Go ahead, Mr. Spring.
I'd like to comment that this site is, appears to be marginally suitable for additional development due to slope and avalanche. The slope, as the staff has indicated, is an average of twenty-one percent. Also that the rezoning recreates incompatible densities higher than at least some of the surrounding parcels. That the expectation was that this parcel, when it was bought, would only be available for one single developable parcel and that, lastly, that it's consistent with the Eagle River, Chugak Eagle River Comprehensive Plan, Land Use Plan.
Anyone else have any findings on that? Mr. Cange?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd just like to point out that none of the other municipal departments had a problem with this, particularly building safety and supported, in fact, through staff testimony tonight.
Thank you very much. We've been here for two and a half hours. We're going to take a ten minute recess. We will come back and take up case G-two. Thank you very much. Case twenty-fourteen oh one eight five, Amendment to the Anchorage Municipal Code of Regulations to Modify and Update the Plat Review Checklist and Surveying Standard Specifications, Proposed Revisions. Do we have a staff report?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You should have two documents in front of you, not including late comment packets. One is dated January fifth. This was the original staff report provided to you with the original ordinance. This ordinance does amend the Anchorage Municipal Code of Regulation, section twenty-one fifteen, which is the plat review checklist and surveying standard specifications. These are the standards against which final plat submittals are reviewed by the municipal surveyor's office. This section has not been updated since nineteen ninety-two and the ordinance reflects changes in technology, resolves conflicting requirements, and clarifies and standardizes all required certificates. At the January fifth meeting, when this was first before you, you were in receipt of multiple comments requesting additional time for the surveying community to comment. It is my understanding that between that date and today, that the municipal surveyor has attended the local surveying community's meeting, the Alaska Society of Professional Land Surveyors, I believe that is the title, and has discussed that, some of their issues or discussed their issues with them and has proposed some amendments. Those amendments are listed in a supplemental memo that's dated February second and they are listed by page and line number. And then, of course, you have comments that you have received, both on the first document and on the second document. This is a very technical ordinance and as I am not a surveyor, there is very. This is a very technical ordinance, and as I am not a surveyor, there is very little of it that I can explain to you. So at this point, I would like to turn the microphone over to Steve Schmidt, the municipal surveyor, who may like to speak briefly to it, but can certainly answer any question that you may be able to think up. Thank you.
Wherever you're comfortable.
Good evening, I'm Steve Schmidt. I'm the municipal surveyor for Public Works. Excuse me. As Erica said, the plat review checklist is what we use when we review final plats, when they're submitted. The original document was, it was an ordinance that went through the Assembly in 1992. And needless to say, there's been a few changes in technology. And this is simply an update, the bulk of the document is an update to our internal process. I'm not sure if everybody's familiar with the final plat process, or if I need to go through the entire plat review process, I can do that as well.
Go through...
Okay. Well, you've got 30,000-foot view. Let's say you have a piece of property, and you're going to subdivide it. You're going to have two acres, you're going to subdivide it into two lots, two one-acre lots. You submit a preliminary plat. And the preliminary plat, you'll have a surveyor or an engineer, and they'll determine how the roads are going to be oriented, whatever, and the lots. And then you submit that preliminary plat, which is your initial plan, to the planning department. That preliminary plat is submitted and distributed across all departments, all utilities. Everybody has comments on that. And then these comments are compiled by the plating department, I'm sorry, the planning department, and conditions of approval of the final plat are created. When the final plat is submitted, that's after the subdivision's been surveyed, monument's been set, and then it comes to my office, and that's when this plat checklist comes out. It's very old-school, it's very paper-driven, it's literally a checklist. And we check everything on the plat, we check the plat material. One thing that we updated as an example, in the 1992 document, it listed vellum as an acceptable material. Well, you can't even submit that to the plating, or to the recorder's office anymore, so we removed that. We added, on the new document, or the new checklist, we added a plat size. We added the 22-inch by 34-inch plat size. And we've been allowing that from our design engineers for the last couple of years. That allows our design engineers to take a full-size plan set and reduce it to half-size using an 11-by-17-inch paper without having to redraft. And as Erica said, I did meet with the ASPLS, the Alaska Society of Professional Land Surveyors, and went over the questions and comments they had regarding this document. There was a few changes, and there, there's some people had questions on those. One of the comments, I'm sure you guys have seen in the interaction back and forth, was in regards to records of survey. Records of survey are handled in a completely separate portion of the code, and this, I'll refer to the checklist, does not regulate records of survey. What I did do in this document is we listed all certificates used on all plats. And there's a couple certificates we used on records of survey, which are listed in this new checklist. Another topic of discussion was in regard to secondary monumentation. When you go out and set monuments on a subdivision boundary, we require two primary monuments. A primary monument is a typically a two-inch iron or aluminum post that's 30 inches long, it's a flange, it has a flanged bottom. And literally to set that type monument, you need to dig a hole, set the post in, and backfill it. That's for primary monument. There was a question in regard to the plat, or the monument material on secondary monuments, as to whether we were going to accept plastic caps as a monument material. And after some back and forth, I decided to accept plastic cap monuments, based on discussions with the Professional Surveyor Society. Other questions involving blanket easements were discussed, and I've made a couple modifications regarding our requirements for easement documents. And a couple of minor things. As an example, in the 1992 document, there were four instances in regard to monumentation where the term self-identifying cap was used, and I removed those because I have no idea what a self-identifying cap is. And we have a very specific metric in the new specification identifying what markings will be on monument caps. And that's it, pretty much. So anyway, as I said, the bulk of the document is, it's an internal document used by the Public Works Department. When we go through, when a final plat's submitted, we literally go through and we print this out, and literally we check everything, we literally check it off. We keep all copies of these review comments in a big file. As I said, there are a few items in here that can be considered regulatory, and that's why we're in front of this body, specifically in regard to the monumentation and the requirements regarding certificates and what have you. So did I cover the plat review process well enough? Did that make sense?
I think you did.
And I guess if anybody has any questions?
Yeah, we got several in the queue, thank you. Ms. Dean and Mr. Spring?
Through the chair, thank you. Basically, from the comments that I read from the surveyors, I'm basically running up against the easement right-of-way issue, and the record of survey certificates is both what most people have a problem with, most of the surveyors have an issue with. They all did, or not all, but quite a few did ask for a review before the board. You say you have taken it to the board of the surveyors. Do you have any written response from them on their feeling of all of the issues regarding this case?
Specific to the record of survey?
No, do you have anything in writing from them?
In writing, well, I do not. I do have an email from Ken Ayers, the president of ASPLS, who, and I don't have it with me.
Okay, because Ken Ayers in here is frustrated a little bit in his posting that he has written from December 30th, "I feel that this ordinance amendment should be sent to local surveyors for the, through the ASPLS for review and comment prior to public hearings and adoption. There are additional changes that can improve the ordinance, and there are portions that require additional clarification. I personally object to the change in secondary monument requirements," which I believe you did change.
We did modify, yes. Based upon his recommendation.
Right, "as this will significantly increase the cost of both time and materials," and he went through that. Okay, "I request P&amp;Z to postpone any action on this amendment until staff has consulted with local surveyors and/or provide response for concerns and comments." And that did happen, we did put it on...
I don't, I'm, this is from memory. I believe it was January 15th when I met with them. But yes, I did it. And I dealt with all the comments. It was a well-attended meeting, and as I said, I don't have the email with me, but I can forward it. That was from Ken. I received an email from Ken this evening, or I should say this afternoon, just thanking me for taking into account for the comments and recommendations from the local survey community. And essentially just thanking me for going through the process.
You know, going back to the individual things that people did have issue with, it was the easement right-of-way issue that seems to really catch everybody and become an issue. From what I understand, it's mostly an issue with the one or two utilities that tend to cause the conflict, is that it?
It's very specific instances. If you take an easement, an easement is a right to use another's land. And Chugak Electric is an example, especially back in the 50s, they were granted blanket easements for multiple properties. And so there's blanket easements all over town. When we, on a plat, we identify every easement on every parcel. And on a blanket easement, as an example, we would simply identify that on a plat note because you can't really show a blanket easement, it covers the whole, the entire parcel. And so there was a question initially regarding blanket easements. And one of the modifications I made to the document regarding easements is I added the statement, "With prior approval of the municipal surveyor's office, blanket easements acquired by record document may be identified by book and page number as a plat note." And that very specifically goes to comments made by the survey community.
And what's, okay, from what I'm hearing from the survey community, they don't like this particular change. Why are you making...
The initial document, the 1992 document, I want to make sure I get the wording correct. The 1992 document says, and this is a statement that I, that I struck, and the statement is, and this is from the 1992 document, "Easements acquired by record document can either be shown on the drawing or cited in a note stating the type of easement and book and page number they are recorded at."
Right, so it's just a note versus an actual dimension?
Correct, correct.
Now you're asking for a dimension, is that what I understand?
So now what, what we've done, in the 92 document, it doesn't specifically state that all easements will be dimensioned and identified.
Right.
And so, just a rule that my predecessor has required this, and I've continued this, and that's why I'm putting it in this document, that all easements will be dimensionalized and identified on a plat.
And that's the problem that the surveyors have, is that now you're asking for dimensions when they may not exist.
Right, and that happens every once in a while, not very often. And let me give you an example. Well, let's assume that you have an easement document from Acme Utility Company, and they very specifically state that within this particular block of this subdivision, there's an easement for an electrical line or a gas line or whatever. And they refer to, to, I don't attack, excuse me, an attached sketch. And this is a recorded document, and the attachment is on page three of the document. And then you look at it, and the document has two pages because the easement document was never attached. In doing so, in the 92 code, you have this easement document for this facility, and since we have no idea where it is, we, it's a known error, we are essentially perpetuating that error by noting on a plat note that this easement exists, there's something out there, and we have no idea where it is.
There are situations, though, that there are easements that can't be dimensioned. They may be something simple like a driveway use across the corner of a piece of property that isn't dimensioned. I used to be on the plating board a long time ago, and we did run into situations where driveways did go across another piece of property and they weren't dimensioned. In this case, then, you would require those particular things to be dimensioned, am I understanding correctly?
I would not, no. On a case-by-case basis, no, I would not. What I would do, as I said, if you're looking at an access easement, that's a private access easement, we don't show private access easements. If it was a specific easement granted on property and it was dimensionalized, we would require that, yes.
So you're asking for them now to be dimensioned. And that's the difficulty that I, that, you know, has been pointed out for us by some of the surveyors. This is a significant change and would impose a burden upon the property owners to try and resolve old easements by document that are imprecise or ambiguous in location. I know of a situation right now where somebody was given access to the parcel next door to put in their septic system. It's not dimensioned, just to be able to use the property to use it as their drain field for their septic system. You know, by asking for these dimensions now is very difficult because that is an older situation, that now how do you dimension that? You'd have to go out and dig it up to find out exactly where it is. And now you've created a whole series of issues potentially by requiring this. Do you see that at all?
On one hand, I do. On another, I do not. Because, as an example, and again, let me go back to say it's a gas line easement. And there's a gas line easement granted, or a better example would be a septic line. And there's an easement out there for septic, and you buy this property, and you refer to a plat note on the plat saying that there's something out there, but we don't know where it is. And you buy this, somebody buys a property in good faith, and they move forward to develop the property, and they go to the building, and they get their building permits, and they come up with their design, and when they go out to the property and they call for locates, and then all of a sudden they locate the utilities, as an example, or the septic system, and then all of a sudden they find out, well, wait, wait a minute, I had no idea this stuff was there.
I've never called for locates for a septic system. You guys don't locate those.
Septic systems, I thought that's what you were saying, is that there was a, your easement was for a septic line.
In this particular situation, I have a lot that the next lot to them, they used for their drain field, and they had a septic easement. It was non-specified, just that they could use it as their drain field.
So then let's say it's a gas line, or an electrical line that's buried, or something along those lines. And again, these easement documents that I'm discussing, they're, we come across a couple a year, not very often, and for a very specific purpose. A general easement, we're not going back trying to correct a problem from a 1954 easement document where we can't, I mean, we've got an easement that we had to vacate because there was a power pole, it literally was in the middle of Lake Otis and Tudor. And we know it was there, so we vacated it in regard to the plat. We wouldn't require somebody to show something like that on a plat in action.
Why do you want to make this change?
Very specifically because, it's happened a couple times where I've had people, we know there's an electrical line out there, as an example, and we've told the surveyor to go out, and all they need to do is take a couple topo shots, which means you go out there, take a couple topo shots, and identify where the overhead electrical lines are, and show it on a plat. And if they say, we wouldn't need to do that, we can just put a plat note on this and walk away from it. And the way I look at it is that we are providing a lesser product for the public.
Isn't it supposed to be determined by the utility?
Yeah, well, yes and no. Again, in my position as a municipal surveyor, I'm looking at, to protect the public, more than anything else, I guess. And we are providing these plats not only for engineers and surveyors, but for property owners as well. And by doing our due diligence, and if we see, if I come across an easement document, which I know is incorrect, and I can fix that by simply showing where the facilities are on a plat, by simply identifying where they're located, and moving forward, I think I'm providing a better product for the property owner and the public in general.
So all you're asking for is more detail then, and...
Exactly.
Okay, and then, so the next one is the record of survey certificates is the other one that seemed to be the big issue with surveyors.
Mr. Chair, if I may, perhaps if we can just stay on that one before we go to another issue, if some of us have other comments, is that okay?
I apologize, I am sorry.
Oh, that's okay.
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Spring and Mr. Robinson, on the easement question, and then we'll go to the record of plat.
Okay, well, these are all new terms to me. You use blanket easements, and is it the same as record documents?
Yes and no. Let's assume that you have a piece of property, and whatever utility company comes in, and the reason that you're granted a blanket easement is because a blanket easement can be considered or looked at as a right-of-entry permit. And so if I give you a blanket easement on my property, I allow you to come on my property, you can go wherever you want on my property and do what you need to do. So in the case, let's say you're an electrical company, and you're going to come in and you're going to run your electrical lines across my property so that I can build my house, or houses, or whatever I'm going to do. So the blanket easement allows you to come on to the property, and then if, as soon as you put your line in there, and now you know exactly where those are, and let's say hypothetically, your easement is 20 feet wide, 10 feet each side centered on this line, then you can go get another document easement to further identify exactly where that easement's located. Does that make sense?
Yeah, a blanket would be something that's anticipated but not yet in, that...
Essentially, yeah, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Robinson?
Thank you. So following up on that, and, you know, we deal with blanket easements all the time, obviously, if you're dealing with any kind of lender, investor, they want to see those go away as a condition. And so, you know, we spend a lot of time actually getting rid of blanket easements. Just as an example, if it's... uh, just as an example, if it's, uh, if it's, uh, like an MLNP blanket easement, you have to go through the assembly, right? It's the amount of time that it can take. This has nothing to do with anything that Steve's asking for, but it's, the private sector has to clean these up, I think, what we're hearing from the municipal surveyors, he wants to see them cleaned up as well. I think my, my issue is, when, when, when you have the specificity, I think, brought in onto a, a, a document, you're much more able to change that document than if it's on a plat. And, and the timeline to get through something may be a lot easier if you're, if you're changing a document rather than the plat itself. And I think that's, that's a concern that I, you know, that I have, that, you know, we're, we're potentially delaying, you know, when, when we can get the final plat. And, and, and the other thing is, are, are we potentially creating a situation where if there's ever a change again to that document, um, you have to go back through the plating process. You can't amend it through, through that, that plat, that, that, that record. And, and I'll give you another example. Um, AWU often is now asking for 30 feet a lot of times instead of the existing 20 feet that exists in a lot of our, you know, our, our old, um, sewer systems in the back of lot lines. And so if you go in and you replat, you're having to give that additional five feet that, on your lot, that maybe you hadn't anticipated before. They're a little more flexible where they'll allow you to kind of work around your building, so they won't necessarily ask for the full 15 feet, maybe it's 10 feet in some places. But if I were to actually record a specific easement on a plat and place my building down there and draw it, you know, down to the exact location, if I don't hit, my contractor doesn't hit that, you know, that building exactly in that spot, then the only thing I can do to basically get my final financing is to go back and replat. And that's often why we use the tool of having these things be, you know, be separate documents rather than having to go back through the plating process. You know, I wonder if you have a comment on that? I mean, that's just a real practical way. At the end of the day, we've updated a document that is clear, succinct, it's recorded, it's not some sloppy thing from the 50s, it just isn't on the, the, only the plat. At the same time, if you were to go and do an ALTA survey, it would certainly show up there, even though it wasn't on the plat, because they would get every document that was recorded against that property and show it. So I, I don't know if you have a, you know, a response. I, I see that as a potential limitation in the work that I do, and I, and I just wondered if you could comment on it.
Um, well, we, we get that a lot, property owners come in a lot, or developers, and we say a lot, a lot of times, depending on what, what we're doing, we say it's, in this particular instance, it would be better to record a particular easement by document so that you have the flexibility.
So you're not trying to change that ability? I mean, I, when I started reading the language, I thought if that language goes away, then it becomes harder to do that.
No, 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 not at all, no. All, all, all I'm, all I'm doing is I, if, if there's a document easement, or a, a, a any document easement, I, I want the easement identified specifically where it's located on the lot. And then, and so if, if I have a plat today that's subject to any easement, we're filed previously on this particular lot, anything that happens tomorrow moving forward, that's subject to, to the plat, and they're, they're completely different. So, so if, if I have an easement now, it would be subject to any previous easement or previous plating action, but, but, but they're, 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 they're separate.
Are you still referencing it as a plat note on the plat, or are you referencing, or you're actually requiring it to be shown on the plat? Isn't that the issue?
Yeah, well, yes, and, and again, if you have an, a, a easement by document, and I want to, I want to know where this easement is, for, for an electrical line, as an example, I want it shown and dimensionalized on the plat, so that, if, if you buy the plat and you have an electrical easement going through the middle of a lot, well, we, as an example, we've, we've, we've had plats like that before where people have bought a, a parcel of land, and they have these great plans to, to do a short plat. Short plats essentially have two lots next to each other, and you remove the middle of the lot line, and you're going to put a, a nice big house in the middle of it, and then we have them come through and do the final plat, and there's an electrical easement running right through the middle of the lot.
Yeah, but they didn't do their homework. I mean, I, I don't have necessarily a lot of sympathy.
What I'm, what I'm trying to do is provide homework for, we'll call it the unsupervised.
At, at the expense of who's doing it today. I mean, that's, I think that's where our rub is. I get what you're trying to do, and I, and I'm sympathetic to it. I want you to be sympathetic with the, you know, the other side of the table where we're scrambling to try to get through a project into a building season, and any more requirements, you know, potentially kind of adds, you know, adds more on to us. So if, if I could, then, following on, I, I, we're still on this easement right away, and I'm, I'm following the comments that I got that you had back and forth with, with, I think, the Boute Company on. Um, the, the other issues that come up are things that, that are, that are really indicated as general notes, that, you know, the, the, the cut and fill slopes of one and a half feet is the example she uses, the stream setback is the other one, things that aren't necessarily, you know, the stream setback might be measured from the center line of the creek, um, you know, those typically aren't detailed so specifically on a plat. Are you asking for it to be?
Stream setbacks are shown on plats.
So, how about?
However, however, the, the slope stabilization, the one and a half foot?
Yeah.
To one, that, that, that's not, that's a simple reservation on the acceptance, um, statement.
That doesn't need to be shown, delineated that state.
No, no, and exactly, but I would, I would, I would look at that as being more of a blanket easement, because we, we don't know where it is. And, and unless we were to go out and engineer the road and determine the, the limits of our required, um, slope for, for that particular instance. However, a, a stream setback is shown. If, if you were to develop a, a parcel of land, you, we would require you to go out and survey where the center of the, the stream is and show your 25-foot offsets on that.
So, so back to, you know, similar, the, the, the slope easement being similar to a blanket where you don't know exactly where it is, aren't there cases where you plat where that's true, where you, maybe you haven't further developed, where you don't exactly know every, I mean, what you're just, that strikes me as a little bit contradictory, where you're trying to, you, you want to have every blanket delineated, but at the same time, for a slope, it's not really, uh, necessary because it might depend on our, you know, on, on our, you know, meanwhile, you know, a lot of these exist on roads that have long since been put in, frankly, that gives us problems because we'd rather they go away, since it's, you know, it's clear it was there before there was ever a road, but, but they stay there in perpetuity. So, um, I, I, again, I think, what I want to know is how we make this process smoother for both parties involved, both the municipality and, and, you know, the private side, and I'm not, I'm not sure some of these things exactly, you know, help us when we, when we really get, I mean, I, trust me, we're dealing with, you know, because you live it, we're dealing with a lot of sloppy work, right, from the past? And the problem is, is, as I see it, where does the burden fall? And as Ms. Dean suggested, it's not on the utilities with, with whom the responsibility should lie, it's on who's developing the parcel. And, and I guess, you know, because the municipality holds the hammer, and, you know, we, the, the plat's needed, you know, you can hold that up, but it, it seems a bit unfair in that instance.
Well, you know, I, I see, I see your point. Um, let, let me say that if, if we're developing a parcel land and it comes through on, on a plating action, what, we, we base everything off of the title report, and so any and every easement identified in that title report is reflected on the plat one way or another. If it's a, a general easement, like a, a blanket easement, we, we can't really show those, so we identify those as a plat note. If we have an easement for a very specific utility, which is delineated by meets and bounds, then we very specifically, I dimensionalize that and identify that.
So what, what do you think the objection of the, you know, the commenter really is? I mean, you know, it strikes me, they're a surveyor, wouldn't they be happy that?
You're, you're talking about Janice's comments?
Yeah, I mean, wouldn't they be happy to get more work here? I mean, that's basically what they're being asked to do.
Well, and, and I talked to her, it's, it's funny, because I, I, she sent that email, and then I responded to her, and she had, she came by later, this is on Friday afternoon, and dropped off her plat, and I talked to her about it, and, and she, and she, there was, let's say there was a misunderstanding, and I, I talked to, to she and another surveyor at Boute today, because he called, he said, well, I'm going to come to the meeting unless you answer my question, I'm going, what? And, and he, he was assuming, based upon the, the way this is written up, that we are going to require them to go out and essentially survey all blanket easements and everything. I said, no, 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 that's not what it's?
So you think it's actually been, it's been cleaned, their issue has been clarified from, from what you're saying?
It, it has.
By you taking that language out?
Right.
You're not saying show every easement, you know, show every blanket, show everything?
No, I, I, very, very specifically, as I said, I, I added a statement, "With prior approval of municipal surveyor's office, blanket easements acquired by record document may be identified by book and pages of plat note." That, that, that took care of 98% of their issues.
And then the other one, we just, I had an example on, if I've got this, this, uh, you know, uh, easement between me and AWU, or me and a private property owner, and I want to keep that on a, as a, as a separate document, I mean, I, I still can't quite, it seems like if it's dimensioned, you want to see it on the plat. And what I'm saying is, it's, there still might be instances where, because it may change, and, and, and you want to avoid having to go back through a plating process.
Right.
I mean, that's, that's, you don't, that's horrible, right?
No, but, but you see, if, if it's a easement document?
Yeah.
Well, let's, let's say, if, if you come in, in 1970, and get an easement document between you and AWU, or you got your electric, whatever, but it's a document to you.
Yeah.
In order to vacate that document, that's a simple, you vacate it, go to recorder's office, it'll cost you five bucks. If it's dedicated by plat, then in order to vacate that, then you got to go through a plating action.
Mm-hmm.
So there, there's, it's kind of apples and oranges. I see your point.
You're not saying that you need, but, but aren't you, by showing it on the plat, aren't you dedicating it by plat?
No, no.
How, how?
Because if, if you look on a plat, if, if, if we have, let's say, a, a parcel of land that has easements all over it, and we come through on a plat today, because you're going to do a replat, we refer to all record easements on that plat as being, we, we identify where they came from, by book or page, by this particular document, or by this plat. And then again, if we dedicate a new easement, we very specifically state on the, on the, on this new plat, that this new easement is dedicated by plat, or should say dedicated by this plat.
And nothing here requires more items to be further dedicated by plat than what exists today?
No, no.
Okay, thanks, thanks.
And, and again, you, you got to go back to the source document. If the source document was a plat, a 1972 plat?
Okay.
Um, I'm, I'm sorry, if, if the easement was created by plat, then you need to vacate it by plat. If it's, uh, created by document, then you can modify or eliminate it by, by document.
That's great, thanks for that clarification. Sounded like Ms. Dean had another issue.
Well, I, I, I want to ask a couple questions here, then I'll go to Ms. Dean. I think this document got much better when we asked you to meet with the surveyors, from our perspective.
Well, to, to speak to that, unfortunately, this first came out over the holidays, and so that, that had an impact, but no, I, I agree, it's, it's much better, I agree.
It, it's a better document. To me, there are still questions that can be clarified, and they should be. I'm the only PE sitting up here, and so I, I've got more sympathy towards this issue than most. To me, this thing needs more work in getting some of these questions clarified, because I read this thing, um, "The final plat shall show the width, bearing, and other necessary data to delineate all easements to which the lots are subject." Now, I read that, but I hear you saying something different. And, and that's what is discour, dis, concerning to me, is that what I read and what I hear, you know?
Well, from, from my perspective, there's two types of easements. There, there are, there are blanket easements?
It says all easements.
And, and all others, right.
No, it says all easements, okay? So I, I'm going to sit here and say, well, this says that I got to show all easements. And I have letters here from people in the industry that are concerned with the wording on this thing. And I don't think we're, I don't think we're there yet. And so it, and I can sit here and count noses, I know that I've got enough votes that we, we need to get this thing clarified, we have professionals on one side, we got the muni on the other side. I wish to heck we could get the utilities in there, because I am convinced that 98% of this problem are the utilities, and if they had to start paying for their errors and paying for their 30 feet, it would get cleaned up so fast your head would spin. And I fought with AWU and the rest of them, AWU in particular right now is the one I'm against, but we, 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 I don't have a way to get dragged then picking and screaming here. So, but I, I am, I don't think we're there yet. Ms. Dean?
A, a few years ago, I was, uh, uh, putting a driveway in and going to be digging around and doing a bunch of work in a lot, and, uh, I wanted to do locates, and I called for locates, and, um, AWU said, um, "When you find the sewer line, can you let us know?" There's the main sewer line runs through that property, it's about 100 feet, 50 feet long, through the, with the lot, it was a pretty good-sized lot. I thought that was an interesting response. So, you know, at what point then? It is, it is sad that some of the utilities have gone as far as they have. I know that Providence, I believe, not long ago, gave easements to, I believe it was N-Star, is that correct? I think Tim Potter has talked about that. So, yeah, we do have issues, and a lot of it is surveyor issues. Janice did go ahead and send another note, um, after she met with you, that she wrote yesterday regarding easements and right-of-way. And from her note, she says, "The concern that I have regarding this major change in current code is due to the liability that surveyors incur when they sign a surveyor's certificate, certifying that the plat is a true and correct representation of lands actually surveyed, and that the distances and bearings are shown correctly. It is within the scope of our survey to determine that the property boundary is correct and not faulty. It is not within the scope of our survey to add or change dimensions to, to existing faulty or blanket easements that are not being dedicated to the municipality by the plat. We, as a third party, have no legal authority to amend or correct efficiencies in a recorded document. I understand that the municipal surveyor is trying to accomplish, and I hope it can be accomplished in a better way. Utility companies are involved in the plating process and are required to sign off on the final plat. If the municipality requires a blanket easement to be dimensioned on the plat, then perhaps the municipality should require the utility in question, i.e. N-Star, to provide dimensions and dedicate it. Um, in my particular mention of AWU, I was looking at short plating a particular, or plating a lot into two separate lots and creating a flag lot, which was going to mean crossing this particular sewer line. I didn't do the project, but now looking at a particular situation like this, this would have caused me a great deal of difficulty to go out there and find that sewer line dimensioned, and figure out how wide of an easement it should have, correct? Would that have been on my responsibility to do that at that point?
I would say no.
Who is the responsibility? Because now I'm turning, turning in a new plat to create two lots out of one.
It seems to me that the utility should go out and take care of that.
But I have to be able to get that information somehow onto the piece of paper that I turn into you in order to create that plat. So how did that process happen?
I'd have to see the document. Uh, in, 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 it's, a, a, a particular instance that I'm thinking of, I mean, we, there was a, like I said, there was a specific easement document which was grossly in error, because, as I said, they, they referred to a specific sketch, and there was no sketch attached. However, we knew that the facility was out there, and in this case, it would, it would very easily have taken the surveyor a few minutes to identify it and, um, show it on his plat. In the case of your sewer line, I would assume that the, they would, the, the utility would go to the nearest manholes and determine where, where those manholes are located, and they would provide that information to you.
Now, the surveyor's?
No, they'll ask you to do it. I mean, that's the thing.
Yeah, well, the, and, 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 yeah, I, I cannot control the, the utilities. Now, that, that's, that's the problem that I have, is I cannot regulate easement documents created by utilities. However, I can control what the municipality accepts on a plat. And if I have something which I, I flat out know is wrong, and I simply identify it and turn a blind eye to it, and accept it as a plat note and walk away, from my perspective, I'm doing a disservice to the public.
Why is a blanket easement considered?
I'm not talking about blanket easements.
Okay.
I have, I have no problem.
A plat note, but you don't know that the plat?
I have no problem whatsoever with, with blanket easements at all, none.
Okay.
I, I think the issue is, if I may, I, I think, you know, by you requiring it, and again, I understand why you are, but you've just given, you, you've just taken, you know, any rationale for the utilities to have to do their own work. They, they now know that as a condition of me getting a final plat, I have to do what is their job, right? And so, and, and that's the crux of it, right? And I think, you know, we all want what's right, but it goes down to everything in the development world, right? It's, you know, who should pay for it? Whose responsibility is it? And I don't know how to get there. I mean, I think, I appreciate you reading that letter, because it summed it up a heck of a lot more than I could, but I think that letter sort of nails the issue. And, but I don't know how to get there from where we are today.
This is a public hearing, so unless you have anything else to say, I'm going to open the public hearing.
Are there any other issues to discuss?
The other issue was the Record of Survey certificate, and Janice did have that well-written also. You did have a response, and we can discuss it later, but that was the other issue that was on the table, too. Just those two things, I think, were the biggies, but...
Yeah, but my point briefly regarding the records of survey is that I'm simply identifying the certificates used, and the record of survey itself, if you're going to modify that, you need to go to a completely separate portion of the code to modify records of survey.
Right, and Janice also had a response to that, too, yesterday, and that was, "In order to clarify the intent of the new Record of Survey Approval Certificate, I would like to request the municipality consider adding the phrase, 'In cases where the municipal surveyor is required or requested to review a Record of Survey,' to the proposed amendment sentence. The Record of Survey shall contain a certificate of approval in the language which follows with signature of the municipal surveyor. Since I am not the only one who is confused by the current wording of the proposed amendment, I think this phrasing or something similar will avoid ambiguity in the code." Is that...
I think that between the existing code and this checklist, I don't think... I think she's reading more into it than is intended. All I'm simply doing on this checklist only is to identify the two certificates we use either in the instance when we have a Record of Survey where we have an owner and a municipal surveyor signing this. And that's all I'm identifying, is the certificates.
That I just...
I see her point, but I believe her point is in a separate section of the code, is the way I would interpret that.
Thank you.
Don't go too far. Mr. Potter, will you step to the mic to state your name and its cover?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, my name is Tim Potter, P-O-T-T-E-R with Dowell. We've consolidated our name into a single company now. We are Dowell again, and we've dropped the HKM. They've become part of us, so... What I'd like to do is, I did hand out a letter. I hope that you had a chance to review it. I think the issues were pretty well discussed, both by the commission members and by the municipal surveyor. One item that I have listed here is the 2115-001A and B, and that's the discussion about action has to be taken within 60 days. And it's always curious to me, because I know on the side of the table that we're on, if we don't get stuff done when it says "shall be done within 60 days" in code, there's typically a consequence. And I guess this is just a general question in structure of code. When you say that the city's supposed to do something within 60 days, and it's a "shall", is there a consequence? I mean, do we get... If it takes them 61 days, do we get half of our application feedback for recording a final plat? What is it? So, you can take that one. That's not the most critical one, it's just a note. The other issue has to do with actually providing bearings, distances, and that exactness and a suggestion of accuracy on the easements. So there are platted easements, there are documents easements. Document easements may be a blanket easement, or they may be a specific meets-and-bounds-type description of an area that would be incorporated into that easement. So there's really two types of easements. Blanket easements have been taken care of as referenced. Platted easements have to be shown, not a problem. And for years, we've been showing all easements that are recorded against that piece of property, whether they're recorded on a previous plat, or they are a document easement with the meets-and-bounds description. We have depicted them, and we have not necessarily had to put bearings and distances on there. It's kind of like preparing a drawing on a computer, so you see an AutoCAD drawing, and it must be right. Looking at it from the other side a little bit, when you project accuracy on a stamped survey drawing that the municipal or the surveyor has to stamp and put his credibility behind, there's a suggestion that everything on there is absolutely right, and if it's not, you can sue them. And, you know, that's not necessarily a good place for us to be, and not one that we want to be in, because if we're going to take on that liability, then we have to go back and do the necessary research and do an analysis of that meets-and-bounds description, both in distances and bearings, and make sure that it actually closes. And if that's an expense that everybody doing a plat has to do, then that's something that everybody that has us and others do plats needs to know, because the only way you should take on that liability is if you do that work. Otherwise, you're stupid, because you're going to get nailed at some point, because anybody can sue anybody for anything, it's just a few bucks. And it's a problem. So, you know, my suggestion is that we should have to do as we have done in the past, show a depiction of the easements, identify what they are, give a specific reference to the document that created it by book and page, and then leave it up to that party that's looking at that piece of property to do the necessary research to do that. And I know what the municipal surveyor is trying to do, and I applaud him for it, that it's to get an up-to-date picture and depiction, so when you look at it, because most people just go and get a copy of the plat before they buy a piece of property, or they go and they start doing a design layout on a piece of property. I see Mr. Walker smiling, because I know that's what he does. And that doesn't necessarily tell the whole truth, because document easements likewise can be extinguished or modified. So you might go get a copy of a plat that's been recorded within the last year even, and there may be those easements that we've now put bearings and distances on aren't even there anymore. So now we're perpetuating information that was right, but now is wrong, and giving people a wrong interpretation or impression of what's there. But I think what is really the biggest crux is the requirement that a professional surveyor really has to go back and do the work. And I can show you multiple examples over the years of where, especially Chugatch Electric, has been absolutely wrong. And if we could do something to pass an ordinance within the city that said, "All you utilities that are governed by the, whatever it is, the Regulatory Commission, if you're going to operate within our boundaries, then you have to, when you create an easement, it has to be stamped by a licensed, registered surveyor within the state of Alaska." That would relieve some of the liability that everybody else is going to have to pick up. With that, I'd be happy to answer your questions.
If that was within our authority, Mr. Potter, I would move forward with great vigor, but I don't believe we have that ability. I wish we did.
You know, Mr. Chairman, I'll take that one. I will speak to the municipal attorney and see if that's, in fact, a possibility.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions for Mr. Potter? Mr. Robinson?
Your suggestion on correcting this issue, and I definitely will ask the municipal surveyor, is where specifically in the ordinance does it need to be changed? Do you know specifically?
When, it's in the language that's been talked about, that says that all easements have to be shown, and they have to be depicted with bearings, distances, and dimension, unless dimension is just a rough, it's 10 feet wide, or it's whatever it is. But sometimes, that's not how it works out. So, the way that I read it is that that has to be fully dimensioned, and it must close. So if you're going to depict it with real dimensions, out to the accuracy that's required by the city on the monumentations and the bearings and distances on the boundary of the plat, then somebody's got to go back and do the work.
Page 12 of the ordinance is the language, line nine, excuse me.
Yeah, section nine.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Potter? Ms. Dean?
Through the chair. Janice Zilko wrote up a very nice amount of information for us. She also talked about the Record of Survey certificates, and you might have heard me read off what she had written earlier. How do you feel about the wording that she's asking for? Do you have a copy? Do you want to...
I don't have a copy, but we had talked about it at the last hearing out in the foyer quite a bit with Ken Ayers as well. And I don't necessarily have a problem with it, but, you know, I am just a lowly planner.
Right.
And I've just processed plats for the last almost 34 years here in the city, and worked with a large number of municipal surveyors. But I'm not the registered surveyor that stamps our plats. And I would want to, and I'd be really out of place to not run that language past Stan Pons and Sir Chief of Survey or Willie Stoll to get their comments.
So personally, I'm stuck on this and looking at this, thinking that I would want to table this for more information before I initiate anything, because this is a serious legal document. I mean, this could cost a lot of people a lot of money, a lot of time, and hope that the utilities do their side of things, which they may not, because there's pressure.
Sure, and, you know, if that's what the commission would like to do, you know, I will commit that Dowell, both myself and our surveyors, will be involved and participate, not a problem.
I'd like to make it a clean document, definitely. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Potter. Yeah, come on up. As Mr. Robinson said, you had a question for the surveyor?
No, well, thank you, Mr. Chair. I think we just went back to the original item that we discussed. I did have another one, though.
I think you were talking about the measurements of easements.
Well, right, and as Ms. McConnell pointed out on page 12 of 21 of the AO, page 14 of our packet, it's really, it's that new sentence, and it's the deletion of the other language that I think is, you know, the issue at hand. We all have heard the issue, it's just a matter of what's, you know, which way do you want to go, I guess. I had, my other issue that I had a question on is this removal of this word, approximately 300 feet for adjacent property, and I can't quite follow what I think the comment is, but I think as of now, your survey on a plat shows approximately 300 feet, and it says the proposed amendment deletes the word "approximate," includes right-of-ways and the requirement. This is background data and property not subject to the actual survey. So the implication here is that you're going to have to survey 300 feet around your property that you're actually trying to survey. Is that what they're trying to say?
No, think of it as a, excuse me, think of it as a vicinity diagram. And if you have your subject property, and we want to show property or the subdivision 300 feet surrounding it.
But it's not, it's not as... They're just worried in that comment, you suppose, that they're going to be asked to show more than they might otherwise have to if you use the word "approximate."
The particular instance, because I talked to Janice, she's afraid we're going to go and require 300.000 feet every single time. And I said, "No, what I want is, I just want to have my office control whether we accept 250 feet, or 300 feet, or whatever." Because if I have, and I've had this happen before, when people have come in and they're showing 200, well, 200 feet's approximate, it's approximately 300 feet. And we go, "No, no, the code requirement is approximately 300 feet." And so then I get into this discussion about the determination of the term "approximate." So my feeling is, if I remove the word "approximate," then I have the ability to modify that based upon my office's requirements.
Okay, thanks.
And like I said, I don't want, I'm not going to measure this out to 300.0 feet, but I've had this discussion, people come in and say, "Well, 200 feet, that's approximate."
I, you know, I hear you, and, you know, we've worked together, so I know, I know you're fair. I think the comments that I heard from the chair earlier is, you know, what it says, it says, and who knows who's going to be sitting in your chair at some point. And I think that's the, you know, that's what we're trying to balance out here.
That's exactly my concern, and I've sat on the other side, and I've had a lot of words get read right back to me. That's not what the intent was, well, that's what the words say, and that's what we're going to enforce.
Sure.
And it's been very painful. Mr. Spring?
Yes, there's one other comment by Janice Zilko on page five of the packet. Plat scale, she was, I think, in your proposed ordinance, you have 1 inch equals 100, 1 inch equals 200, approved variance. So does that give you, is that similar to this other issue where you have authority to allow any scale you've...
Correct, we have standard scales, and then on approved variance, we'll, if it makes sense, we'll allow it, yes.
So Janice suggested additional scales, like 1 to 20, 1 to 30, 1 to 40, 1 to 50. Is that necessary with that language that you have the flexibility to do that?
From my perspective, correct, correct. I think it's already covered. She wants it further clarified, and when I discussed it with her, I said, "Let's just say that I want to make that decision as opposed to have it out there as a blanket statement, have somebody come in and say, 'Well, I can use 60 scale here.'" When, I don't think, I would prefer to have that decision made by my office. And we, the existing verbiage is that, I believe, I can adequately, I can adequately
We've got too many situations where by giving the authority to your office, I'm not picking your office particularly, we can end up being asked to pave a driveway on an unpaved street. I mean, the just invariably, I mean, I'm not comfortable. I am not comfortable with this, and I think it needs more work. I think it needs more selling. I think maybe the line between the surveyors and yourself, we got to get that, we got to sell it to these people, and there are a lot of concerns here, and I am uncomfortable with this. In the matter of case 2014... Okay, wait, wait a minute. This is official here. Anybody else wish to testify? Would you wake up, Mr. Potter, make sure he's awake? Okay. Anybody else wish to testify? Public hearing is now closed on the case of 2014-0185. All right. Ms. Dean? You have a motion?
I do. I'm moved to table this particular case, 2014-0185, without a set date. I would like to have the surveyor, the city surveyor, work closer with the surveying community to come up with changes that everyone is happy with, and, you know, and be specific as to why these are so necessary. I just, I'm not so sure they are. But I do think that tabling at this moment would be in everybody's best interest.
Could we also inquire that on future easements, or the municipal surveyor develops standards for the utilities to follow when they desire future easements?
We have those. And I've talked to the municipal attorney about this, and I have no control over anything done by...
...utility?
Correct. I have control on plats. I have no control, I can get a utility company, they can write out a recipe for a peanut butter and jelly sandwich and record it, and as long as the margins are correct, that's fine. I have no control.
We have a motion by Ms. Dean. Do we have a second? We have a second by Mr. Walker. Ms. Dean or Mr. Walker, do you care to discuss your motion? Mr. Robinson?
Well, I'm going to support the motion, but what I wanted to say is, first of all, it sounds like through your meeting, you got a lot closer than we were when you were first, you know, when this first came forward, and whether it was the holidays or whatever, but I appreciate the effort, and I think I would echo what the chair said. We just, you know, whether it's Title 21, whether it's whatever, there's a lot of, you know, people get... know, people get frustrated when it's this stuff. And it's, and I think, since we're opening it up and looking at it, we just want to make sure that we get it right. My primary concern, as I hear it, is still around, basically, that what we talked about, the easement right-of-way issue, what Mr. Potter just said, you know, suddenly, suddenly my, you know, my costs have just gone up because we want to get it exactly right. And I get wanting to get it exactly right, but it doesn't always have to do with a project at hand, and while it might be nice, it also might be something that's not totally necessary. So let's, could we take a step back? I heard Mr. Potter suggested he was going to, you know, maybe get with somebody and provide some Dowell language or something like that, and we could look at that when it comes back. But again, I think we've gotten closer. Let's just try to get that one step closer and when we come back.
Mr. Potter, quickly.
And not having talked to the municipal surveyor, I would suggest that not to table it kind of indefinitely. Put some pressure on all of us to get this worked out so we can get on with stuff, you know? Bring it back in 30 days, 60 days, whatever it is, rather than having us log around with our schedules trying to get it. Put some pressure on us.
I would say 90 days. 90 days. It takes a while to catch up with people and go back and forth, and 60 days might be too. You know, it's getting to be that time of the year when people are getting busy.
We've got contracts we've got to deal with, 90 days.
Okay. Any other comments? Can people please use your machine on the motion by Ms. Dean?
May have to wait until next year. May have to wait until next year.
Motion asked. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Ms. McConnell, you had a question regarding the scheduled directors' meeting on Thursday.
To date, we haven't heard from all the commissioners about whether they can attend. I think maybe there's only three that have said they could, so does the commission want to have the director's lunch on Thursday, want to postpone it, want to skip it this month?
If you're going to attend, raise your hand.
It's a four.
Or I think we'll skip it this month.
Okay. Could I ask for a mind, for those of you who haven't filled out the survey, the doodle poll for the work session on the Chigetch Access Plan ordinances, please do so.
Okay.
At this point, it's looking like February 18th, 19th, or 20th is going to be the best date for the people who have responded, but, you know, that could change. But I'd appreciate it if you could fill it out.
Mr. Spring and then Ms. Dean.
Yes, just a comment or advice, I guess I'm seeking. My term as Air Quality Committee is finished on February. I don't mind serving again if it's okay with the...
This is the Air Quality Committee?
Yes, a citizen advisory committee. We're awfully busy. We just got so much to do. I don't know why anybody wanted to do that job.
How's our air quality?
We solved air quality pretty much, I guess.
What are you doing then?
Thanks to me and my cohorts on the, and Stacy's previous work on the committee. Is it okay if, do I have your...
Mr. Spring, will you continue on the Air Quality Committee?
I'd be glad, sir.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your effort. Ms. Dean?
Yeah, I have a Title 21 issue that I'd like to discuss with staff, and this is something that relates back to a little bit to our church last month that did not require paving for the parking or landscaping. Couple weeks ago, I went to pull a kitchen remodel permit, remodel only. I was told I had to pave the driveway. Now, it went all, I mean, I jumped up and down, you can just imagine. And it was a zoned R7. The house was built in 1985. It was part of the city at the time. It was zoned R7 at the time. There were some special limitations on the lot, but none of those applied to the driveway. The house was permitted at the time. I do not know if the house had a CO and when it was finished. I don't know. And the reason I don't know is because our former mayor had all of those records destroyed, so there's no way to pull that. So I was told if I couldn't produce a CO, that I would have to pave the driveway, which of course, you know, made me extremely happy and, you know, I'm not sure. I tried, of course, get non-conforming rights, and Bob Gray tried 90 ways to Sunday and couldn't get me non-conforming rights on it. I was told I needed a variance. And so I went round with Michael and Sonnet, and my husband went down and went round and round. And finally, after jumping up and down a lot, Sonnet finally said, well, okay, we'll let you this once. Well, that doesn't work. And I've really got to say, I'm not really impressed that this is how things are being dealt with down there. I'm just a remodeller. I'm not trying, I mean, I'm just trying to make homeowners happy. And for me to consider going and talking to a homeowner and saying, I am sorry, but you're going to need to spend another $40,000 you didn't intend to spend on your kitchen because now I need to pave your driveway. Oh, incidentally, the road was not paved, but I was going to have to pave the driveway. So I just want to know why this church over here didn't have to pave their parking lot or put landscaping in, yet for my kitchen remodel, I was doing nothing to the exterior of the home. I was going to have to pave the driveway.
Through the chair, Ms. Dean, the most significant difference is that the church had non-conforming rights, and it sounds like your client did not. It is my understanding that the zoning plan reviewers, who are part of the Development Services Division and are not part of planning and do not work for me, I understand that they were talking with their chain of command about what is the appropriate, what is the scope of what they should be looking at in these types of situations? And should the scope of what they look at when they're reviewing for an interior remodel include things that are outside the building? Should the scope of, you know, if there's a remodel that includes things like changing out the windows, things that are kind of on the surface that have some outside component but maybe aren't adding floor air? Should that look at the rest of the site? If you're adding a deck, should that look at the rest of the site? I did hear about this particular situation that you are telling us about. I do not know what the results of their inquiries into their chain of command were. I can certainly find out.
But I'm just curious how this all ties in with Title 21. Now, I plied under the old. They said if I had plied under the new, I would only have to pave the first 15 feet of the driveway. So that made my customer, you know, and honestly, I didn't even discuss this with my customer. I just dealt with it on my own. I just didn't have the heart to go and explain this to them.
Well, Ms. Dean, I mean, technically, they had a violation that they...
Maybe. Maybe they did not. You don't know if they didn't have a CO. If they had a CO, they did not have a violation. An inspector may very well have signed off on that house back in 1985.
But if the inspector signed off in, without, the inspector can't waive the code requirement, so the inspector could have made a mistake.
Absolutely.
If the code requirement was there at the time...
The road wasn't paved in 1985. I highly doubt the inspector asked for that driveway to be paved back then. It was 1985. I'm sure they were happy just to have a house get built in 1985, given the circumstances of the economy at that point in time. But suffice it to say, it's not the burden of the homeowner to prove of a CO. It should be the city to have to say you don't have a CO. Otherwise, everybody has to keep every single piece of paper and pass that on to each owner, or the recorder's office needs to get the CO every time. There's no process for that. And since Mayor Begich had all those paper, all that paper destroyed, there's, I used to go down and pull stuff from the 60s. It's all gone.
I can't, I was not aware, I have not heard that Mayor Begich had any records destroyed. I have heard stories from people a lot farther back, although oftentimes, the record, and I don't know about COs, but the record of, say, there was a permit, but we can't actually find the permit or what the permit said. So I've run into that situation. I don't know anything about...
Yeah, it was old inspection reports. You could pull old plans. You could find anything that went through. I mean, it was amazing, the amount of records, which was very expensive. But anyway, I'm off on a tangent.
We're not going to solve this at 9:30 at night. Thank you, everyone. I believe I have a motion adjourned by Mr. Walker, seconded by Mr. Strike. Good evening. Please be good next week when I'm not here, please.
Please grab your packets for next week. They're sitting here on the shelf before you leave.